This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry.
That's okay. As part of the packet, a document outlining the proposed reappointments and appointments for P&amp;D, ARC, Police and Fire, this pension and fire pension. Any questions? Okay. Hearing no questions or concerns. Entertained a motion to approve said appointment roster, again, as outlined in the document dated June 25, 2020, to the board from me.
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Yoska and a second by trustee Hanley. Any additional discussion or comment? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Yoska?
Aye.
Trustee Hand- Andrew Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Will Brandt?
Aye.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Um, trustee Hanley?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That's everything for me for tonight. Moving on to reports and questions from trustees and working groups, starting with trustee Kibitzky.
I have nothing other than the agenda.
Thank you. Trustee Will Brandt?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Andrew Lee?
Just the agenda.
Thank you. Trustee Yoska?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Trustee Hanley?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Price?
Uh, just the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joe, do you know if anyone on the team has a staff report tonight?
Uh, I do not. Anthony, Tim?
Just the agenda tonight. Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on to questions from the audience. It's time to for those who are joining us virtually, uh, from the committee who wish to address the board on items that are both on the agenda and not on the agenda. So, uh, if anyone wishes to address the board, uh, we just ask that you, uh, speak out now. Okay, I'm not getting any indication of anyone wishing to address the boards, so we will move on. Consent agenda items A through C. Is there a desire by any board member to remove any of the items from tonight's consent agenda? Okay, hearing no changes suggested. Entertained a motion to approve said agenda, items A through C.
So moved.
Okay, I believe we have trustee Kibitzky by a note, and with a second by trustee Andrew Lee. Any additional discussion or comment?
I just have just one question. I noted, noticed a lot of purchases for salt. Is this just the fulfillment of our contracts from last year?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I believe we have a second motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kibitzky?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Hanley?
Aye.
Trustee Yoska?
Aye.
Trustee Andrew Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Will Brandt?
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business item A, deferral of economic development loan payments. Trustee Kibitzky?
Okay, um, you have before you, um, the, a deferral of economic and loan payments, and if you remember, um, earlier, just mentioned that we, the, the village took the initiative to offer deferments to the various businesses being Emmett's Craft Donuts and Coffee, Woodfire, and Blue Root, such that in during this time when they have no business, that they, um, can defer their loan payments through the village until initially it was through March-
Three months.
It was through June, and we're at, they're asking to extend it for two more months for July and August, and I would propose that we extend it through September. I just don't see where this is going to turn around that quickly, and rather than keep coming back and forth again, just extend it through September, the interest accruing on those loans is still accruing. It's going to be tacked on to the end. So they're still going to pay it all back. It's just for right now, while they have no business, they're not paying, paying, making these payments.
Uh, any concerns or comments from the board?
No, just so the board's aware, if it was, if it was a 48-month payment, it now gets extended an extra six months. So 54 months, as the example.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the village board? Okay, uh, trustee Kibitzky?
Okay, I move that the village not collect the economic development loan repayments out of the village of West Dundee through September 2020, and to extend these loan repayment schedules by the number of months, which is six, which payments to the have not been made.
Motion. And a second, I believe that's by trustee Price. Any additional discussion or comment? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kibitzky?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Hanley?
Aye.
Trustee Yoska?
Aye.
Trustee Andrew Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Will Brandt?
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. Uh, moving on unfinished business item B, Riverwalk Use Restrictions and Signage. Uh, trustee Price, uh, before I hand it over, I just wanted to note that I, I did ask manager Keppler to place this, uh, on the agenda because I, I am getting some feedback that, uh, the new stretch is, is popular with people using it for fishing and unfortunately leaving, leaving some detrimental, that could harm people there, and we don't want it to be taken over necessarily, uh, for specific use. So, uh, with that, trustee Price?
Um, sure. The, um, so on the, we have fishing restrictions on the north side of Main Street, um, on the south side, um, it's probably, um, although to me it seems a little ambiguous, but in any case, um, it's not marked, and so people are fishing there, um, whether they're allowed to or not. And so the suggestion is to prohibit it altogether on the south side. Um, I thought, and I guess I just want to bring up for discussion, doesn't make sense to designate a portion of it for fishing. Obviously with the block and everything there, it's a pretty convenient spot for fishing. Um, leaving, you know, debris and that sort of thing is definitely a problem, and if, you know, or, or could be a problem if there, and that shouldn't be allowed, and, um, if that, you know, we'd want to think about where the appropriate location would be, such that, you know, when they're casting and things like that, it wouldn't, uh, limit, or, you know, wouldn't, uh, you know, prevent people from enjoying the space. So, um, you know, I, it's, it's a good family sport. I think, you know, there's a lot of benefit to it, uh, to letting people fish, and so, and it's a good spot for, from a perspective of, you know, easy place to, to actually do that. So my thought would be to leave at least part of it for fishing.
Uh, trustee Price, just to clarify, you'd like some of the south side, uh, remaining for fishing?
That's correct, yeah.
The, the challenge is that I, I think if we leave a part of it, I mean, I guess just in the brief amount of time that it's been available, folks have not treated it well. I, and I, I wholly understand where you're coming from. It's a nice wholesome activity, um, but I think, you know, especially on the, the east Dundee side, uh, where it's not as manicured, they could probably fish from there, uh, from the bridge. But again, I, I think if, if we've given it 30 days, uh, of, you know, ambiguity, and, and this is what we're seeing, I just, I don't necessarily want to test that, uh, period, because, you know, kids are out there with their families going for a walk and stepping on hooks, not a good thing.
Just recognize, just recognize that a portion, there are specific areas on the north side of the Riverwalk that are designated for fishing. I think there's three specific spots. Uh, they're, they're linear, uh, they've arrows that say fishing allowed. So I think there are three distinct areas, um, between, uh, basically Washington and corporate limits, uh, that are allowed. So I, I mean, if we, if it's a, the board's desire to, to provide for a location, a, a smaller location on the south side, that can be accommodated, uh, just like we do on the north side.
Um, I guess my thought would be is let's give it a shot and see, but I, I, again, I'd like to hear from what other trustees think about it.
Joe, have we gotten any complaints from those immediate neighbors that are right there? Cause when I see people down there, it looks like they always go to the far, what will be the far south side, right where it gets right into the water there, which is right next to that residence. Have we gotten anything?
No, we haven't. And the problem, the difficulty is, uh, people will fish where they believe the better fishing is, regardless of where we think they should be fishing, which is part of the problem. So I think we want to try and marry those two, if at all possible.
We think that, and, and I don't know how much we've observed, or, or others have observed, uh, where there's fishing. I mean, uh, um, Dan, you had indicated at the south end. I wonder if that's because it's a good fishing, or just because it's the convenient spot, because that's where the parking is. Um, anybody have any other information on that?
Actually, that's away from the parking.
Parking.
Well, and that's the spot where it kind of drops down right to the water level. So you can kind of, I mean, not that the limestone blocks don't do that, but that's a spot that it gets right up into the water. So that's probably why people are down there.
And is that just grass all the way to the water, Dan? I'm not familiar with the-
No, it kind of, it kind of, it's almost like it would be a boat launch, but it's not. And then there's a whole bunch of rock boulders that kind of topple into, yes, it, it's like large gravel. So you can, you can walk right into the water from there.
Right, that's the canoe launch.
Oh, okay.
The question I have is, are we going to enforce this? Because I already see on the north side, cross from 200 Main Street down in that sunken area, they're fishing there all the time.
And in the gazebo too.
That's where one of the signs are, uh, is permitted.
That are allowed. And it's prohibited?
Not on the brick.
It's not permitted on the gazebo, that's correct. But there's an area just north of, of the, uh, Plaza that is designated as fishing.
But they're fishing down in the Plaza where the benches are. That's where I see them.
We haven't had any difficulty with it, so we haven't really actively enforced it, but it's something that we can have a conversation with the police department and remind them to, uh, you know, uh, have those conversations.
I mean, all you got to do is move them along.
Right. Point them to the spots that they can fish.
And Joe, is there fishing permitted on the north side Plaza, right by Blue Root there, where the, it also has the blocks down into the water?
No.
Okay, so that would be a similar approach to the river?
Correct. There are three, there are three designated areas, I think, and they're all more of the grassy areas. No fishing is from the hardscape, has been the, the way it's been designated.
Can we do that on the north side? Or the south side, forgive me?
Do what, Chris?
Just, you know, no fishing from the hardscape. That's how we enforce it. Uh, maybe we just put up the signs without really specifying, and the ambiguity will hopefully chase most of the people away.
The logical spot, go ahead.
No, 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 Joe, please.
The logical spot is the south side, um, where, because it's, it's not-
At the boat launch?
The, right, the canoe launch. It's not the limestone step down, uh, it's more the, uh, the boulder area. So the logical area forward to allow it would be the south side of the, of the improvements, closer to Oregon Avenue.
Okay, would that be okay?
Body residence.
Correct.
Well?
Can we try that on a, on a trial basis, and then, uh, if we get complaints from the residents, or if it becomes too much, we can, uh, adjust it further? Would that be okay?
And then, um, uh, maybe, you know, the police, if you guys could, um, you know, when you have to enforce it and you tell people to move, just sort of let them know if, if these rules aren't followed, it's, it's just going to go away altogether. So, you know, help incentivize them to follow the rules and clean up after themselves, uh, so that we don't, um, so that we can continue to maintain the fishing there.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, I think trustee Price has, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just a reminder, as, uh, part of the memo, we're going to redo the signage up and down the Riverwalk in terms of the, uh, the allowable activities and the unallowable activities. Um, they're, they're in need of, of some attention and, and some new graphics, and we'll take care of that. So there's consistent signage up and down the Riverwalk.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so I think trustee Price has to kick it off, but trustee Kibitzky, you can certainly second.
One, one last question. Should we put any signage at South End Park saying fishing is allowed?
There is, isn't there?
I don't think there's any signage.
No, there's no signage, because it isn't, it isn't prohibited down there.
There's that boat launch there. Isn't there a sign down there?
I don't believe so. I can double check, but I don't believe there's any signage or any restrictions down there.
Okay. So we'll just address the, uh, south end near downtown, and then Joe will get back to us with, uh, his analysis of what's going on at South End Park. Uh, so with that said-
Did you want a motion on this?
Yes, please, trustee Price.
Okay. I move to limit, um, fishing south of Route 72 to the area, um, at the end of Oregon Avenue, generally described as the, um, as the boat launch area.
And, uh, trustee Kibitzky, you had indicated you wanted to second that?
I did.
Thank you. Uh, we have motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Hanley?
Aye.
Trustee Yoska?
Aye.
Trustee Andrew Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Will Brandt?
Aye.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Aye.
Hey, all eyes motion carries. Item C, downtown stage two, purchase of benches and trash receptacles. Trustee Price?
Um, yes. Uh, I'm sorry, this is, wait, this is 200 Washington, right?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, yeah, yes. Uh, thank you. Um, yep, so this is pretty self-explanatory. Um, you know, we didn't include in the original plan, uh, uh, public works can install these, and so this is just authorization of purchase, these three benches and three receptacles.
Any comments or questions from the board?
One other question. In, in regards to South End Park, I think, I believe there's only one trash receptacle down there. And the other thing I think we need to purchase probably with this for South End Park is where residents can put their hot ashes from grilling out, because they tend to just dump them on the ground.
Are there grills at South End?
No, but people bring their own, and then don't know what to do with the ash or the hot coals.
And dump them on the ground.
And they do sell containers for that.
Now, we could, that's, if that's an activity going on, that's something we could actually, uh, probably look at.
Okay. So Joe, you can get back to us on that, to see what we might need, need to do in order to kind of, uh, enhance South End Park.
Joe, is that more Park District down there, or is that us?
Uh, that's a combination, so we'll have to have that conversation with them.
Oh, we're still holding Park District money, aren't we?
Yeah.
Correct.
Like a garbage can.
Yeah, I mean, if, just talking a couple 55-gallon drums, uh, I'm sure the Park District can accommodate it. If we want to make sure that there's a consistency with our, uh, you know, the, the Dundee, uh, type, uh, receptacles, then we're probably on the hook for those.
Okay. All right, so Joe, you'll come back to us with that, correct? All right, thank you. Uh, right now, uh, we have-
Do you want to, do you want to hold off to, um, on the purchase for the route, the other locations until we get the whole package? Or would you like to proceed with this motion?
I'd rather proceed with this, and then I can come back to you if we have a, a couple addition ones we're going to add.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I moved authorized purchase of three benches and three trash receptacles from New Toys. These are products as a single source provider for installation downtown between Route 72 and Oregon Avenue, First Street, the Fox River, in an amount not to exceed $6,528.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by trustee Andrew Lee. Any additional discussion or comment? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Hanley?
Aye.
Trustee Yoska?
Andy? I can't hear him.
No, I don't think any of us can hear. Trustee Yoska? Uh, trustee Yoska, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
No, he's not on mute.
He's not on mute.
Andy, you there?
Aye.
Trustee Andrew Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Will Brandt?
Aye.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. All right, let's go on to new business item A, uh, a development proposal for 200 Washington. Uh, trustee Price, would you like to kick things off?
Uh, yes. Uh, so we've received a number of-
I said aye.
He's got to be-
Thanks, Andy.
That was Andy. He's got to be on a-
I'm not on mute. I'm not on mute.
Okay.
Um-
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Um, over the years, we have seen a number of proposals for 200 Washington Street. Most of them were, um, involve demolition of the existing structure and redevelopment of the site. This current proposal, which is the latest, is actually, uh, proposes to reuse the existing building with some architectural enhancements, uh, et cetera, um, for some home healthcare, as well as some residential. And with that, I either, um, see, uh, I see the, the developer is here, so I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak, but before I do that, um, I don't know if, uh, director Scott, if you have anything you want to add, or, or, uh, manager Keppler.
Tim?
Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, no, please.
I would just, uh, point out that obviously we've, uh, since about 2015, that we've been looking at, uh, various redevelopment proposals for this. I think we've seen eight or nine of them. The summary of, uh, of those, uh, are in the packet, uh, the various, uh, they've taken various shapes and forms, uh, condos, apartments, uh, row homes, um, market rate, subsidized. There's been a, a litany of, of types and projects. All of them have requested the contribution of the property, and then the vast majority of them have been in excess of between $900,000 and, uh, $3 million as part of the economic incentive package. So with that, um, obviously we purchased the property back in, in 2008 with the intention of, uh, facilitating a redevelopment of the property, um, to aid in the downtown redevelopment. Uh, in the interim, uh, we've operated at, on a rental basis, um, and, uh, on a fairly profitable basis up until, uh, the last year. So, um, the property has significantly deteriorated. Obviously, the board has authorized, um, pursuit of, uh, best disabatement and the potential demolition of the property. And then most recently, we've had, uh, Serge Justin Associates, uh, come forward with a proposal for the reuse of the existing structure as it sits right now. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Cliff Sergeus and-
Hold on. Uh, so, uh, Joe, thank you for that. And then Cliff, just a moment, please. So, Joe had mentioned that there have been a number of projects that have been proposed for the site over the last few years, and each time that those have come forward, uh, there is kind of a small committee, uh, comprised of, uh, Tim, Joe, uh, Tom, and, and me. Uh, we've talked about each of these, and you're probably thinking as a board, well, why haven't we discussed these, you know, in broad terms or in a public meeting? And that's because, generally speaking, the projects haven't really passed, kind of a kicking the tires phase. Uh, either they were asking for all the money upfront, uh, they asked for something that was really hyper-dense, that we thought wasn't necessarily in keeping with the neighborhood, something that had a lot of residential units attached to it, um, or they were asking for too much. So even beyond the land give, then a little bit of the increment over time, they wanted in excess of a million dollars beyond what the property would generate. The reason why this one is coming before the board tonight is because the ask is indeed for the land, which is common among all of the proposals we've received. Uh, but this petitioner is willing to take the increment over time, and, uh, they're looking to reuse the building, which I know doesn't necessarily excite a lot of folks, but, uh, we thought that it checked enough boxes to bring it forward before the board. So I would ask you, whether you're for it or against it, hear it out, and if you think it's got some legs, let's, you know, convey that to the petitioner, but also be very clear about what your expectations are should this go forward. Do you want a better facade? Do you want to make sure that the parking is set across the street? Do you want to reuse that corner for some public use? If those things are on your mind, say them tonight, please. So with that said, Cliff, you have the floor.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Joe, do you know, was the PowerPoint able to go to the board, or should I present screen here?
Aye. They, they do have a copy of it, uh, but I can get you, uh, on where-
Does everybody have a copy? Is it just easier to view your copies?
Yeah, we have it.
Did you send that email today, Joe?
Yes. Cliff, you can kind of run through it if it's easier for you to, you know, as you're going through the PowerPoint, just I, I've given you presenter authority, so you have the, the opportunity to do that.
Oh, you're assuming that I'm going to be able to figure that out again, Joe? Let's see. All you need to- Try and share a screen that I'm not, this is not how we rehearse this, Joe.
Well, you, you are sharing your screen.
And you see my screen now?
Yes. Now all you have to do is bring up your PowerPoint.
Okay, how's that? Can we?
There you go.
There you go.
Nice.
Okay, so, you know what? First off, thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, you know, we've been around the area for a long time, and I know some of you, um, have served on different boards with some of you. Some of you don't know me from anyone, so I just want to take a minute to introduce the team, make sure that we, we talk about the company that we're representing, and the project in general. Right now, the team exists of Cliff Sergeus and Alan Miller. I'm a longtime resident in the Fox Valley area, grew up in St. Charles, married Audrey in 1990, raised our children here. Our kids went to Emmanuel Lutheran, where I continue to worship. Our three children went to Jacobs High School, were extremely, uh, active in athletics and the arts. I served as a booster club president there, worked with Michelle on that board, and I continue to serve our area with the District 300 Foundation of Educational Excellence. I'm firmly rooted in the community. I'm currently your Kane County, uh, District Commissioner for District 21, and, and, uh, as, uh, Dan will tell you, my wife is a casa in both Kane and McHenry County, so we're pretty active in our community, and, and we live here, and, and we're looking for a long-term hold on something here. So I, I just want to get that out there. Um, my partner in this project is Alan Miller, 28 years in the area here with his wife and three daughters. They also went to Emmanuel Lutheran, they also went to Jacobs High School. Alan has brought multimillion-dollar projects into the area, specifically West Dundee with the Advocate Healthcare, Chicago Institute of Health and Wellness, Advocate Medical Center on 8th Street, just to name a few. These businesses have brought plenty of well-paying jobs into the area, and we're planning on doing that with our current company, Empower Home Health. Alan's an MBA from the University of Chicago, and he usually keeps us on the straight and narrow most of the time, so. Alan and I have, we're not just business partners, we're friends, and some of the things that we do in the community, they're not always work. Sometimes we get to have some fun with this, and I just wanted to share a, a quick photo here of Alan and I mentoring the Dant- the Dundee Crown Incubator. Um, if any of you have had the opportunity to participate in the incubator program, it is just a huge, just a who. To be able to take some of these young people, listens to their ideas, it really refreshes you on what we think the future is all about. Some of the businesses that we brought to the area, I mean, I think everybody has seen, you know, what a Best Buy can become over at the Advocate Outpatient Center, Active Medical on 8th Street, Chicago Wellness Institute. We'd like Empower to join those ranks. Empower is our anchor tenant. Empower is our, is our home healthcare company, Skilled Home Healthcare. And I have tonight with me Brittany Gams, who's our administrator. Right now, uh, Empower, uh, we're on route to become a multimillion-dollar company. Um, in the June of 2020 alone, in the middle of a COVID, we took over 100 admissions from Ortho Illinois and Northwestern Medicine in Huntley. That represents a footprint of over six, 750 skilled nursing visits in our area, a footprint that we're really proud of. This month in June alone, in July, we've already taken 90 patient referrals, and I know your screen says 61. That was- and I know your screen says 61. That was Friday. By the end of business today, we have 90 new patient referrals from Ortho and Northwestern Medicine, and that puts us on target for about $4 million revenue this year and growing. Our current administrative staff is 12 full-time staff at our Carpenter'sville facility, 50 field clinicians, meaning nurses, that are out in the, out, out in the area. During the COVID crisis, we think these are pretty, pretty impressive numbers. We need to find a home that's conducive for our staff. Right now, we're, we're at 856 Commerce Avenue in Carpenter'sville. It's an industrial park. Our people don't like being here. They would really like dining venues, easier access to a highway, and, and we'd like to find someplace that's more centralized for our clients and clinicians. While we were looking at our search, we kind of stumbled on the grocery store, as, as I will affectionately call it. 5,000 square foot grocery store, we believe can accommodate up to 25 full-time staff and 75 clinicians, field clinicians, as we continue to grow. With your assistance, we think that the 200 Washington project can become the long-term home for our quickly growing locally-owned professional center. So we're clear, the project is not a flip. It's a long-term hold and headquarters for our healthcare company. I had a few minutes to speak with Michelle this afternoon, and Michelle said, Cliff, I thought you were just gonna put some paint on this and put tenants in there. That's not what we're proposing in any way, shape, or form. We are looking for a home for our business and a long-term hold. The project itself, right now, we view 200 Washington Street as a shell, and anybody that's been inside will, will let you know that roof is not in the best of shape and is actually coming down in some areas, so we view this as really a foundation and a shell, and we could, we can have at this to make this look as beautiful as we can. It's not just lipstick and whipped cream, it's a complete renovation down to the studs. Once we peel back layers of roofs, the collapsing roof, reinforce the decking, put the sheathing on, put the membranes and replace the parapet wall caps, we can then move inside to mitigate the water that's in the basement, abate the mold, pull down the plaster to expose the mechanicals, and then work to try and combine on the exterior, three different brick veneers, and try and blend those to become what we think could be the jewel on the Fox. We, we don't, you know what? We're not telling you guys anything you don't know. In our opinion, this is one of the most spectacular views in the entire Fox River. You know what? You know, we compare it to the third floor over at Blue Roots. Man, for a one or two-story building, looking at that river, it just doesn't get any better, and I don't need to tell you that. But trying to come up with a plan that's gonna take the five original structures that were there and put them all together, that's gonna take a little bit of, that's gonna take a little bit of engineering and a little bit of ingenuity. We want you to know that we don't, um, take for granted what we have there. The east side parking lot, in our opinion, probably shouldn't be a parking lot. If we can get some parking across the street at the bank, as we spoke with Joe and Dave, we're more than happy to make that east side parking lot an amenity, give it to the village to make it an amenity for the residents in our area. It is bar none, in my opinion, and Alan's opinion, the best view of the river that we have. Leaving that as a parking lot as compared to turning it into a park, come on, I, I think we can do better with that, and I think we can get really creative for that. So, so briefly, we're looking for a home for our home healthcare company that's going to be here for years and years to come. This is not a flip. This is a master planned project that we're all gonna be proud of. And Joe had asked me, could you put together some concepts of what you think this might look like? Well, this was pretty easy for us. We didn't want to reinvent the wheel. So we took a walk downtown and we went over to Bamboozles, and, and if you can see my mouse here, and I don't know if you can see the mouse, but we stole Bamboozles windows. We even stole, uh, Spa Blues windows, and we took Andy's signs from Emmett's, and we took the doors over from, from Bamboozles, and we looked, looked at the, at the railings if we wanted to put a rooftop deck, and we went to Spa Blue and looked what we could take from there. As we put all this together, you know what? Our goal was to say, if somebody was to look at this building next spring and say, oh my gosh, it's beautiful, what was here before? Then we'd have really done our job. And, and I mentioned to Michelle also earlier today, we're working with Karen Conley on the residential portions of the building, and, and Karen introduced, I don't know if you guys know Karen Conley, she's a local realtor, does a great job for our area. But Karen introduced us to the concept called Graje, and I said, Karen, what, what the heck is Graje? And she said, it's what all of your interiors are gonna be, because that's what people want. High-end interiors with white cabinet, with, with the, um, tiles, with the gray tiles in the back, very clean, very high-end flooring, stainless steels. So this is not a coat of paint and go through it. It is seriously, bring it down to the studs and rebuild it, something that any one of us would be happy to live in. The office section, we're not sure if this is gonna be something that maybe looks like a loft effect, or if we want it to look more clinical, like a doctor's office, but it will be 5,000 square feet for our staff, and, and we are here to answer any questions you might have on that. The, the, we'll have some executive offices in there as well. Empower will be a multi-state company, um, Wisconsin, moving out to the Iowa area, so we will have some executive suites that are in here that are controlled by us. So I, I'm trying to be as brief as I can with you folks, but try and give you the flavor and the understanding. First off, we're from the area, we, you know, we are your neighbors. We are not going to build anything that in any way, shape, or form would embarrass us or, or be something that we wouldn't be proud of. It's a long-term hold, it's not a flip, and we're, you know, and we are willing to partner with you. Joe brought a couple of concepts, saying, well, on the little section on the backside that's a house facing the river, is there any way to make that not residential, maybe make it commercial? And, and someone said, we'd love it to be an omelet shop. We'd like it to be a wine and cheese tasting shop. We'd like it to be an Edward Jones Professional Center. We are open to that. We, we, we are truly committed to making this a project that we can all live with. And, and as, as Chris told you, we're not looking for money upfront. We are looking for a long-term stay here. So, so we've tried to put this together as best we can, um, presented to you in a, in a format that's flexible, that we can continue to work on your input, and, and Brittany and I are both here to answer any questions that you might have that we can get you to feel a little bit more comfortable as we move through the process.
Thank you, Cliff, for the, the good presentation there. Um, so just to remind the board, it's not true to give feedback, and then generally speaking, we are going to try to give the petitioner an idea whether or not we think that the concept could work. This does not mean that tonight we just get approval and it's gonna move ahead. What it does mean is it would go through the normal P and Z process and still come back to the board for final approval. So with that in mind, um, I'm gonna open up the floor to questions, comments from the board.
Hang on, Chris, if you can hold on one second. Cliff, can you, uh-
I'm gonna try and do this without disconnecting.
All I gotta do is stop sharing the screen.
And that would be where?
On the bottom. Three buttons in the middle.
Leave meeting, stop sharing screen. There we go. How's that?
Perfect.
There we go.
Good job.
The whole, it's a brave new world we're working in here, so.
It is. Uh, Joe, did you have anything else you wanted to talk about, or can I, you have the floor to you?
Right now, what the developer has presented is basically a concept plan. I think they're looking for some feedback from us, uh, whether or not this is something that, uh, is worthy of, uh, further investigation and pursuit. Um, you know, the, the basic thumbnail, uh, is as presented, is a redevelopment of the existing site, uh, contribution of the property in about $440,000 on a pay-as-you-go basis, uh, regarding TIF revenue. Uh, I think the, the numbers, uh, that we've provided from the staff perspective, uh, give you an indication that over a 20-year period, uh, based on the development, this project has the ability to generate over a, a million dollars in, in TIF increment, uh, towards, uh, specifically from itself, and so you'd be using a portion of that, approximately 40% of, of that increment, uh, to, uh, uh, provide for the economic incentive.
Comments and questions from-
If I can, you know what? The, the exciting thing for me when I presented this and had lunch with Joe was that, you know, we, we have this building here, and, you know, having businesses in East Dundee and, and coming from the area, it was exciting for me to have a project that we could bring forward that said, our staff doesn't need to be there in the evenings and weekends, but we want to come and eat your donuts and have your slice of pizza during lunch and, and maybe drink a glass of wine after work, but our, our field nurses grab their start of cares and are gone by 2:00 in the afternoon, and that parking is all available. We're not here on the weekends, so while we're bringing to the community, we're not taking from the community in terms of jamming up what's already tight down there.
Okay.
I think that's a huge part of the project.
That is. Well, thank you for noting that. Uh, any, any questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to start. Uh, three concerns. Uh, I did have a big concern with the exterior changes, and I think you talked about that with the half-brick and the installation of new windows and everything, so I'm happy with that. Uh, as far as keeping part of the parking lot, I'm assuming then we are just gonna rip that out and grass it over, Joe?
No, I think, I, I think that's going to be a conversation, as I think I mentioned in the, the staff memo. It's probably some combination of parking, architectural amenities, or green space, and maybe the combination of the three. That would be the village's obligation, uh, in addition, uh, but we would retain ownership of that. It's about 5,000 square feet, uh, and we would work with the developer to kind of make sure that whatever we do coordinates with their redevelopment plan.
So my concern would be the cost of putting in the new parking lot, 'cause I remember when we ended up doing that with Emmett's, that cost us quite a bit of money. Um, and then the idea of plowing and everything else with that property.
We're not doing a parking lot.
And you said we're gonna leave parking there?
No.
Oh.
I said we have to come up with that plan. It could be, it could be eight spaces, it could be five spaces in conjunction. We may not have parking there, depending on how, uh, you know, we view that property. So, um, I, I don't know what that looks like, and I don't know what the long-term maintenance obligations, but what I do know is that we would retain the ownership of that. We would be able to control it in terms of what it is, but it probably takes the four, potential four of parking, park, architectural, landscape amenity, uh, you know, type of an approach, so long as it works in the overall context of our downtown redevelopment plan, as well as the prep building's redevelopment plan.
Okay, and the third thing is the little house that's on the riverside. It would be nice if we were gonna develop that as commercial, so it wouldn't necessarily look like a house, so it would match more of the building of the little store.
We agree.
There you go.
We'd be happy to work with you on that.
Okay, was that everything? Trustee Hindley?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Price, it sounded like you were about to speak next.
Well, just, um, in the rendering, it shows that it's still looking as a house. Obviously, this is very early, and I think that, um, you know, one, I, I like the idea of bringing in the, the daytime employment and some good-paying jobs. I think that'll be great for the community. Um, and, uh, I think, you know, having a couple of residential units would be nice as well, and I think we can do a nice little pocket park potentially there, so I like that, too. Uh, I do think, you know, the architecture will make a big difference, and so I think we'll be looking at, you know, making sure that, you know, it, it has a cohesive feel to it, that the architecture of not being sort of faux historic, but having some, being sympathetic to the historic district, and, but having, you know, a nicer of contemporary feel at the same time. So, um, I, you know, in general, I like the Big Bang's windows. I like, you know, some of the just real, you know, limited stuff you've done. I think at the, you know, cornices and some things like that, those, obviously, those are details that, you know, staff can work with you on, as well as, um, some of the rest, so, um, you know, if, sounds like you're willing to do that kind of investment, and so, uh, you know, I just, uh, those are my thoughts in terms of moving forward, and, and I like what I see so far.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Price. Uh, any other trustees interested in chiming in on this?
I do.
Trustee Andrew?
Can we back up a second? Um, what, thanks for coming tonight and joining in with us, but what is your relationship to Empower Home Health?
CEO.
Your CEO, 'cause I looked you up, and there's nothing about you on your corporation. It has Alan Brash as the president, and Angel Gosman is the secretary.
Those are the two individuals that we bought the company from, and I can get you whatever paperwork you, you would like to see. But Angel, those were, they actually own a group called Continental Home Health.
Okay.
And we purchased Continental from them.
Yes, it was, and then it changed to this.
And, and Alan and, and Angel are no longer involved in the company.
Okay, but, and, but your agent is Jeffrey, Jeffrey Dunham. Who is he?
Jeff Dunham is one of the investors in the company when we purchased, and Jeff represents a 25% ownership, along with myself, Alan Miller, and others.
Okay, and if we are deeding this property, who are, who would we be deeding it to? Because I know you're saying you're not asking for anything upfront, but we took taxpayer money and paid $850,000 for this quarter, because it was so important to us. So now, we're just gonna give it to you. Who is it going to, I would like to know?
Well, there would probably be a new LLC that we would create, with myself being one of the members of the LLC.
Okay, and if you decided to sell a year later, we're out.
Well, here, let me be specific. Alan, Alan and I are 50/50 in the LLC, and we would be willing to stipulate in the development agreement that this is a long-term hold.
Or-
Trustee Andrew Lee?
Would there be something that would come back to us?
What's comfortable for you? 10 years, 20 years? Tell us what's comfortable for you. This week, this is a multimillion-dollar investment for us. Between the company and the building, this, we, this is a lot of eggs in this basket.
It is for us, too, though.
Oh, I understood.
Yeah, 20 years would be fine, since we're saying we're gonna recoup a million something in 20 years, then yeah, 20 years would be great.
Yeah, we're, we're- I'm sorry, Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
Let me, let me point out a couple of things about the purchase of the building. We purchased the building back in 2008 at a price point of 850,000 at the top of the market. Uh, we've operated the building for the last 12 years. I think I included in the, the numbers. We've, we have netted out of the building positive cash of about $500,000, which we have reimbursed, uh, the Community Development Fund for those amounts. There's about $22,000 that's left in there. So there's a, there's a net cost to the village of about $350,000, uh, based on what we paid for it, which, based on when we bought it, we overpaid based on the market. Um, so the other thing you have to factor into is the demolition cost, because there's a value to, to the property as it sits right now, but, you know, there are very limited values on a redevelopment proposal, because this is one of the few that we've had. So there's a cost to us for demolition of another $200,000. So the assessor has the value of the property as it sits right now today at a market value of about $334,000. So our value is about-
Did we challenge that assessment recently?
No, we've worked with the, we've worked with the, uh, the assessor to drop it down because of the fact uh, that we haven't had income in the last year. So we've worked with the, the assessor to decrease the property tax-
It went down.
Pardon?
It went down $7,000, the tax bill.
The tax bill went down $7,000, and the vast majority of that is because we haven't been generating income out of it.
Okay, but it's still worth something. I, whether it's worth 850 or 350, it's still worth something.
I agree. No, absolutely, and that's, but I, but I want to, to point out that the, the village has reimbursed, substantially reimbursed a significant portion of- a significant portion of the money that we outlaid based on how we've operated the building for the last 12 years.
Understood.
Any other questions, trustee Andrew?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Nelson, did I answer those questions for you? And I would be more than happy to get together with you personally to make sure you're comfortable with this.
Sure.
Okay.
A lot of these details, a lot of these issues would have to be kind of worked out through the attorneys and through the development agreement. I think the key questions is really, conceptually, are we, is this something we wish to pursue? And then we can kind of work out a lot of the details. I know both the President Nelson and Director Scott have provided some concerns over the architectural. Those have been provided to the developer as, you know, general discussion points. But nothing that has been given to them has scared them off in terms of tweaks to the architectural or the facades that we believe are more appropriate for the redevelopment of the project.
Yeah. To just add to what Joe was saying tonight, we're just trying to tell the developer if we think that the prospect legs, if we think that there's a possibility that we could ultimately come to an agreement. That triggers then them spending some significant funds to try to come up with more specific renderings to try to work with staff to develop something that I think is P and Z and board approvable. And then we'll all go from there. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Just Kibitsky.
Yes, please. As you know, I'm generally the numbers person. And the first thing I appreciated about this proposal, as you brought up, Chris, was that it's payment over time, we're not putting in dollar investments of taxpayer monies upfront. What we are investing is the increment of the tip dollars, and it's less than half. And so that becomes appealing to me. I know in the, when we purchased this property, and I wasn't around during that time, the thought was, well, by purchasing, we can control what goes in there. And as we saw with the property over there, the bowling alley, even though we were a partner in that venture, we really can't control it totally. And I do feel that by working with Cliff, Cliff is genuine, I've learned that working with Cliff. So I think that if he tells us he's gonna be around for 20 years, and it sounds like for the lawyers that we're working with, an agreement is necessary. It sounds like he's ready, willing, and able to sign an agreement to say that he's gonna stay here for 20 years. So I think we've got that, I've got that comfort level. That this looks like it's gonna be a good investment for our taxpayers. Obviously, we don't have the full picture yet, but I definitely think it has legs. And I think we need to let it go to the next step, or the next level, appearance review, additional engineering, architectural, rendering, the whole bit. I like the way that Cliff did look around the village to consider what other buildings are there, and he wants to fit in with the neighborhood. I like that. My one caveat is, I really would like to see something other than another yellow milk brick building. I've got too many of them. If we can stay away from the yellow bricks, I'd be pleased.
Anything else, trustee Kibitsky?
One more thing, based on what Pat was asking, as far as the parking. I do like the idea that was proposed as far as, you know, changing that parking into green space with architectural amenities, a gazebo, something like that, to fully take advantage of the view. You know, do we really need another parking lot? I agree, we probably don't. We should try to maximize the space. I like that proposal.
Okay.
And that's something for us to work at a future meeting, obviously.
Okay. Great, excellent. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Willbrant.
Yep, just in general, I'm supportive of the concept. I like the fact that it's low-density, mixed-use. I was particularly happy to hear Cliff say that there was some thought in putting a small cafe or a small shop. So not only is it an office, not only is it a residence, but there's also some retail value there for residents that don't necessarily see the dollars and cents of having 25 full-time employees here, using our restaurants and facilities like that. But they do see, oh my gosh, there's a cute little restaurant here. That's something that everybody would be really excited about, too. So I encourage continuing to look at that, especially with that opening up to the river like that, cafe tables on the outside for an omelet breakfast place or something along those lines. Downtown West Dundee would be happy to have something like that. So in general, supportive. I'd love to see more, and good luck.
Thank you, trustee Willbrant. Any other comments and questions from the village board? I don't know if there are any residents on the call, or are there any residents who wish to comment? Okay. Cliff, I believe it is safe to say that it sounds like, I'm bored, please correct me if I have this wrong, but I think the board is open to the concept. So thank you for presenting to us tonight, and, you know, feel free to start working with staff on fleshing out the details.
Absolute pleasure. I thank you very much. And trustee Andrew Lee, please reach out, or I can call you, and I'm more than happy to get together.
Okay. Joseph, could you maybe coordinate that meeting between Cliff and trustee Andrew Lee?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a good night. All right, bye-bye. Okay, moving on to item B, professional services agreement with Baxter and Woodman for Sleepy Hollow Bike Trail. Trustee Yoska.
I don't know if you're able to hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's why I didn't speak. I didn't know if anyone could hear me. All right. This professional services agreement is a little more involved than normal because of several factors, including IDOT's involvement and submittal of reporting requirements for grant funding, right-of-way acquisition for federal aid projects. Have more involvement, so the price is a little higher than we're normally used to for Phase 1 engineering. And this project is set for 2024. But we're looking at $114,000.
Comments or questions?
There's one public meeting, there's one public meeting included in the scope of services pursuant to IDOT's requirements also.
Joe, I just wanted to clarify or verify that this Phase 1 engineering is not only for the bike path, but it includes Sleepy Hollow Road itself, correct?
Right. The resurfacing is fairly straightforward. It's a bike path, and it's a little more complicated, especially as it gets closer to 72.
Of course, I, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna get another proposal for Sleepy Hollow Road, for example. Yeah, and it cover, you know, includes topography and survey and a lot of other things. And obviously, this is due to topography, it's a fairly complicated design. So, you know, I'm not surprised that it's higher than what normally we would see.
And it's a million dollars in grant funding.
Yeah. And the grant funding will cover part of this work, too? Or, no, it doesn't cover the Phase 1, correct?
Not Phase 1 or Phase 2 or property acquisition. Covers Phase 3 and construction supervision and construction.
Okay.
Is this bike path just from Huntley Road to 72?
Correct.
Along the west side of Sleepy Hollow Road?
That's the conceptual idea right now.
Where is Aspen Hills?
Aspen Hills is a small portion north of Grand Point.
Yeah, it's part of our larger subdivision, so Michelle, it's, they're my neighbors.
There's 32 homes that were a separate subdivision. It's the custom homes up on, help me out, Chris, what's the...
So it's like Karen Drive is where, yeah. It's the fancy part of the subdivision. But this would be a very welcome addition if it's able to happen. The dog park, too, is right there, so I just think it'll be a nice thing. And don't look now, but we are actually developing a network of bike paths along Huntley Road, and now potentially along Sleepy Hollow Road, so maybe someday we'll hit...
What happens when they get to 72?
It connects to Carrington. There's a bike path that heads south next to the Public Safety Center.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And this is a, this area has been a critical linkage that we just haven't been able to really get developed. And now, with the cooperation of the forest preserve and the grant funding, and the completion of Huntley Road, it really does make some sense and is a good linkage in terms of putting the community together.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, trustee Yoska.
I move to authorize a professional services agreement between the village of West Dundee and Baxter and Woodman for Phase 1 engineering for the Sleepy Hollow Road resurfacing and bike pedestrian trail design in an amount of $114,000.
Can we have motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Andrew Lee. Any additional discussion to comment?
Where does this money come out of?
It comes out of the street and infrastructure budget savings for this year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Yoska.
Aye.
Trustee Andrew Lee.
Aye.
Trustee Willbrant. Trustee Kibitsky.
Aye.
Trustee Price.
Aye.
Trustee Hanley.
Aye.
Okay, all eyes motion carries. Moving on to item C, village hall upgrades, trustee Kibitsky.
Okay, well, I'm gonna pitch this back to Joe, but initially, this was included in our budget. And this is upgrades to the village hall, primarily the boardroom. Additionally, the bathrooms in the basement. And the thought being to utilize the time now, when we're not in the boardroom, this would be a good time to take advantage of that. And this would be using tip dollars, which...
Yes. And just before Joe gets an opportunity to speak, I wanted to point out that I did ask Joe to explore this. I think we have a special building, been in a lot of village halls, and none of them is like ours. I just think it's, you know, I think during the 80s, a lot of stuff was 80s-ish, as I like to call it. And I think it'd be nice to, you know, get some period-specific materials, take advantage of the fact that we're not using a lot of the facilities at the moment, and kind of, you know, spruce it up a little bit. I think people who preceded us took care of the building, and I think it's incumbent upon us to do the same. So with that, Joe?
No, I mean, I think it's fairly straightforward. I think we've identified the scope of the improvements. The AV system needs a wholesale upgrade. It's nearly, you know, 28 years old. And, you know, obviously, pulling the carpet out and going to hardwoods and adding some period lighting is really just, I think, an appropriate image for the community with our history and track record. And so I think there's some consistency there. And it's really more kind of some long-term maintenance for the building.
This does not include the windows at this time.
No. What it does include is to evaluate and determine what the direction is for the windows. The windows are a unique area, because it's hard for the village to kind of, I mean, we do have storm windows on them. They're the original single-plane windows, so they don't offer a lot of energy efficiency. But on the other hand, we're not paying for ComEd or Nycor directly because of our franchise agreements. But I think there's an obligation to kind of maintain the efficiency of the windows. But they recognize that altering the windows and updating the windows probably has the biggest dramatic effect on the overall appearance of the building. And so we're trying to figure out what that system will look like. And that's what we will accomplish, at least at this point in time, is figure out what that direction will be. And then we budgeted an additional $100,000 for next year, potentially for the window upgrades themselves. There are 53 windows in this building, and they're not small.
Then I don't think 100 is enough.
But that's why we're, at least, I think we'll have a good, once we get an idea of what the desired direction is, we'll also have a good understanding of what that cost will be.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
So we, I'm wondering about, you know, and I'm sure Archon will do a great job. My only question would be, is, does it make sense to go out for RFP for construction management services? And why we think that we should sole-source Archon?
We can do that. I mean, if that's the board's preference, we just, you know, it's not a huge project. So, you know, it's a fairly low number based on what has been provided as construction supervision. Typically, the construction supervision numbers are upwards in the 15% range. Archon has basically done a number of local projects. I think both Tim and I have dealt with them on a couple of other projects, bamboozles, wood fire, the lofts at Andy Burns. So he's very familiar with the older buildings and working with the village and code issues. And this just seemed like a good fit. But if the board really is uncomfortable with a single source, we can definitely go out and solicit a couple other proposals.
I had a couple other questions. The, and I don't, you know, if we've got some good track record with them, we've, in our experience has been is that their pricing is good, then I'm not necessarily opposed to that. But I just, you know, wanted to know the reasoning behind that. The other question is just the form of the contract. It's, I couldn't tell if they were getting paid based on percent of construction or if the $16,000 was essentially based on what we think it's gonna cost, but it's a fixed fee. And my preference would be, you know, fixed-fee contracts. We don't want to, you know, and again, I'm sure they're a great company, but I don't want to have any incentives for, you know, higher levels of improvement, or, you know, not necessarily taking little bids on some of the individual pieces and such.
Yeah, but just recognize, we're controlling all that. So every contract, the floor contract, come back to the village board. We're gonna bring you whatever we get, two, three proposals. And the board's gonna authorize which wood floor contractor we take. All the contractor is basically going to be doing is coordinating the work and the effort that's being completed.
Just the day-to-day...
So they're not issuing the bid? Oh, okay. Because typically, often a construction manager does do that.
Yeah, no, we're, because of the simplicity, we try to keep this as simple as possible. So all the cost issues for contractors are going directly through the village. The construction supervision has the responsibility of coordinating all the activities. But all the individual contracts will be brought to the board and approved by the board. And all payments to the contractors will be going directly through the village.
And what...
Okay, so we will be soliciting the actual contracts. And I suppose the company would give us some potential contractors to solicit bids from, but we would be doing all the solicitation.
Well, the construction supervision is going to solicit the quotes. And then we get the three quotes, and then I evaluate them, bring them back to you guys for an individual recommendation, authorization to hire a wood floor free finisher and the amount of whatever the number is.
Okay. Again, my preference would be if it's a fixed fee. And I'm not sure if that was how you said it's set up or not.
No, it's not. It's based on construction costs. So whatever the individual contract total, it would be a nine-point, whatever, I think it's 8.3% of the construction cost for the projects, but we control the projects.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I do have another one, is included in this is the ornamental light fixtures outside in front of the village hall. And I looked at those with Joe today, and I would propose that we look at just switching out the heads, if we can do it, as opposed to changing out the whole lights, you know, just switching out the heads so they look consistent. But, you know, try to minimize the cost.
Okay. Joe, you indicated you're gonna be able to do that, you're gonna...
We'll be able to evaluate that as an option. There are probably pros and cons to a couple different ways, but we'll have... too, a couple of different ways, but we'll have all the numbers put together.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, trustee Price, or forgive me, trustee Kibitsky.
Okay. I move to acknowledge a budget of $186,000 for village hall renovations and authorize execution of a professional service agreement with Archon Associates of Sleepy Hollows for general contracting services to facilitate the village hall renovations, as noted.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by trustee Anderly. Any additional discussion or comment?
How long do we think this will take to, I mean, is this a one-month, two-month project, or?
Probably a good three-month project.
Oh, really? Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, madam clerk?
Trustee Kibitsky.
Aye.
Trustee Price.
Aye.
Trustee Hanley.
Aye.
Trustee Yaska.
Aye.
Trustee Anderly.
Aye.
Trustee Willbrand.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. Now on to a discussion regarding bollards. Trustee Price.
Yes. In our board package, there's a proposal for installation of bollards in two locations, one being in front of the police department on Route 31, and the other being at First and Main patio area, you know, essentially for, they'd be crash-rated, so they could withstand, you know, vehicles who are, you know, intending to do harm, as well as, you know, I suppose, poor driving. But given these locations, perhaps the former is what we're protecting against. So.
Thank you, trustee Price. I think, you know, it's important if you look at what happened at Woodfield Mall in particular, you know, it doesn't take much to get a vehicle through the doors. The police department, I think, is self-explanatory. I did ask Joe to take a look at the bollards core near the candy shop, because having talked to the candy shop owners, I'm just surprised, and I'm sure Chief Gorski could attest, how many people have driven up onto the path. And now that we have, yeah, people just sitting up there, and I'm hoping that at some point, you know, we can have some seating out in that area, if you put into like the park. I just, I don't want to risk, you know, the random driver who would otherwise think that that's an area where they could drive.
Okay. There were two different bollards. Am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah.
Pictures. Some of them had lights. Are any of these going to be lighted? First Street.
What we're showing right now- Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
No, I don't think so. As I understand it, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, the lighting has a huge premium to these.
It does. It does. And typically, those are decorative in nature. They don't have the inner structure, any crash-worthiness to them. They're hollow aluminum, and they're purely decorative.
Decorative. Okay.
That's the difference. What we're showing here is something that's very robust. There are two different weights, essentially, and the heavier duty in front of the police station, and still pretty heavy duty in front of the candy store, based on, obviously, the circumstances of both of those spaces. The covers themselves would be the same. So what you see, the finished product that we did a photo simulation of in front of both First and Main and at the police station, that's the same cover. It's a ductile iron cover, but it's what's inside that and what's below the ground, what's, you know, sunken in, that changes the rating at which they can stop vehicles. So there's weight involved. Force equals mass times acceleration, right? So you've got the weight of the car and the speed at which it's traveling. And so, given the two different circumstances there, we selected a slightly different internal bollard, but the covers, the finished appearance, is the same for consistency purposes. I did want to point out something about the front of the police station. By the way, I want to compliment Tony for, actually, after I shared it with him, he picked one without me leading him to it. And he picked the one that we photo-simulated. So it was a very clean look. But, you know, ultimately there, though, I want to be very clear, there's an 18-foot concrete sidewalk in width in front of the police station. We're showing two bollards there at six feet on center. However, so that gives you three equal segments, essentially separating that concrete walk. But there is space to the sides of the edges of the concrete walk to where those two other bigger posts are. So there is some additional room there. And the whole idea of these is try to keep something from finding its way in there. Frankly, even though it's not concrete, somebody could drive into plant area and on an angle and maybe find their way into the front of the police station. So by, you know, does two suffice? It does on that concrete walkway. As you get to the edges, it may require a third, frankly, so then re-space. I don't know for sure yet because we didn't go to that next level on design. It was really more about understanding what it would take to get a crash rating. There's a lot of ways to do this. There's impact resistant as well, where we guesstimate. If you look at 200 Washington, the transformer, there's a concrete-filled steel pipe there that I think Tony actually knows the story behind. I think he even has some photo of it. But it bent pretty considerably, but clearly, the speed wasn't enough to destroy it and take out the transformer, fortunately. So that's the premise. It has no decorative cover over it, however. But it's not crash-rated. The thing about these ones that we're discussing with you tonight is that these have been through a testing process. They are, if you install according to the manufacturer's specifications, it will perform according to the actual product. So that's a relatively new thing. That's a post-9/11 thing. There's a whole lot of science that's gone into it. Washington D's covered with them. Some of them are even retractable. It's quite a science. The old way we used to do these things is just kind of guess. Essentially, there's some math involved, but concrete-filled steel pipe, and then we'd find a way to adorn it with some type of cover. It's gotten a little more sophisticated, is the bottom line there. These are big investments. Now, anything you see in the table as well, in the table here, you know, it does assume public works labor, for example. It's not, and we haven't, you know, bid this project out or anything to that level. This was solely trying to get a handle on, A, the design, whether or not we were going to prioritize crash-worthiness, and then what the basic cost of the materials may be. But there are other materials, and there's certainly labor that goes into this for the true cost of the project.
Tim, I'm glad you brought up the spacing, because that was one thing I was going to comment on. You know, I think, at least in front of the police department, we probably need that third bollard, because I don't think, if you're intending to do harm, you're not going to worry about driving off the pavement, so.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, it was our first pass at it, and I always sent the dimension, and then I started looking at it. I'm like, there's too much space to the sides.
Yeah, I think the same could be said about the candy store there. You know, hopefully, that would be less of a target for somebody intending to do harm. And really, you know, these are more just to keep people from driving where they're not supposed to, but not, you know, malicious acts.
Right.
Yeah, it's probably more like accidental, turning in, thinking it's a driver parking lot. Yeah.
Yeah.
In this case, you know, maybe the higher crash rating is not necessary. I mean, I still think they ought to be concrete-filled pipe, you know, with the decorative cover over them, whether they need the same level of crash-worthiness is another question.
Yeah, very good question, in fact, too. We were thinking about that long, linear kind of stretch, and what it takes to jump a curb, and then what it takes to hit a pipe and stuff like that. So, yeah, we didn't go the next level with that one. I wanted to see what crash-worthy was, but could it be done in a manner that was concrete-filled steel pipe and then, you know, a different cover or even this current cover? That's possible. It would save some money. It may also, again, the spacing on this one, about eight feet back off the sidewalk edge is 20 some odd feet. So we were a little over that. So we're stretching that six feet on center there. So it, you know, three again, looked like it was pretty close, and that would work. But, you know, really dial in a design, we're going to have to be very mindful of that spacing again.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Chris?
Yes?
I think this may, you know, I had put in a formal motion here on materials, you know, given that pricing could change with the third bollard at the police station, and whether or not trustee Price would like me to look at an alternative that's not necessarily the crash-rated, but still a reinforced pipe with decorative cover for the candy store, and dial in the dimensions, may behoove us to wait on any, you know, formal monetary set aside for this.
Yeah, I think if you move forward with the analysis, but the, in terms of actually setting aside an amount, seems a little premature.
Okay. So, Joe, help me. What am I asking the board to do then?
I thought we were authorizing purchase, I guess.
Well, it looks like, Joe, that they, you know, we're probably going to have to add one more in front of police.
Joe, can we just give you an allowance, and you come back with the formal motion? Maybe we just put on consent some night, so at least this way, you guys know you can move ahead?
Yep, that's fine.
All right. How about if we, motion not to exceed 20,000, would that give you enough room to move forward confidently? Okay. Trustee Price, would you care to amend the motion?
Yeah, I move to approve moving forward with assessment of bollards at the police station and at First Street for currently not to exceed amount of approximately $20,000.
Okay. We have motion.
Second. Second.
And a second, I believe, both from trustees Anderly and Kibitsky. Any additional? Please hold a vote.
Can I ask a question? Again, this would be coming out of-
Running downtown, too, I'll have to double-check the budget.
Right. Anything else? Okay, madam clerk?
Trustee Price.
Aye.
Trustee Hanley.
Aye.
Trustee Yaska.
Aye.
Trustee Anderly.
Aye.
Trustee Willbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Kibitsky.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. Well, I would say, guys, we had a complicated agenda, and we got through it, and we did it all via teleconference. So it was pretty good. We're getting good at it.
We're getting good.
Anything else was a good in the order?
I just had a question on Heritage Fest. At one point, we had talked about doing some sort of scale-back. I think you were going to look into that, Joe.
It's on the agenda for Monday.
Okay. Awesome. Perfect. Yeah, and right now, with the numbers climbing again, I just, you know, who knows what the right answer is on that.
Sure.
Can we get a new COVID report?
I'm sorry, trustee Anderly?
Can we get a new COVID report?
Certainly, Joseph.
I can pull up the local data. We have, the fire department hasn't given me any indication that we've transported or had a surge, but I will definitely get the data out there, out to you.
Okay. All right, maybe you can put that in the manager's report, Joe? Okay.
Yep, works for me.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
I will also just make a, just kind of offhand. I was up in Wisconsin this past week on vacation, and certainly, they don't know in northern Wisconsin that there's a pandemic, because there wasn't hardly a single person wearing a mask, and everybody's indoors and standing in the bars. Oh, it's a lot better in East Dundee than it's up there.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Just not a sensation, yes.
Yep. Right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion.
Second.
And a second by trustee Kibitsky. Any additional discussion or comment? None. Almost in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned. Have a good week. See you guys next Monday.
You got it.
All right.
Bye.